Ladies and gentlemen, we have a special meeting for April 20th. This meeting is called the Order. Mrs. Bush, would you be able to place your question?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Bush. Mr. Johnson, would you like to comment? I see no comment. We will move on to our presentation and discussion tonight about budget development. Mr. Wondery.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Mark Rader. We are going to share the third installment of the budget development process, preliminary budget proposals from Lansing for today for questions and comments that you may have. Mark, take it away.
All right. So, a couple of things tonight. I'm going to try to keep it short because I can talk for hours on this stuff. Yes, Wendy said I am not going to book any news. So, we're going to start with that. Refreshing January, even though we really don't know anything further on April 20th than we knew back in mid-January. But it's good to know because there's been some world events that have affected us. And we're going to see that trickle through at some point here in the state's budget. The governor's Senate House, we have all three proposals. So now we've got a little comparison. We've got a chart for that to show you the impact, or supposed impact. And then the budget framework, which is our internal document. What does that mean? Kind of how will it affect us? You see the bottom line is basically we need 262. We're getting about 160. We still have $100 a student. So we're going to see a half million, $1 million if we figure out what we're going to come up with out of our own budget. Because the state is not going to give it to us. So, refresher. Lots of, lots of stuff on the next two slides. Really don't focus so much on the numbers as the left-hand side, the area of different items in the state's general fund that creates pressures we talked about before. So, the gasoline tax. The gasoline tax was raised. Well, how many times are you going to raise the gasoline tax? It was raised 15 cents on regular, 19 on diesel. Generated about $400 million in fiscal '17 for the state. That's good. The problem is that money was spent before it was even gotten to the coffers. So, that's why it's a pressure. Same thing with vehicle registration. Vehicle registrations were increased by 20% this year. Again, a one-time thing. You're not going to do that every year and get an extra $200 million. Homeside property tax credits. They increased the credit. They expanded it. So there's 206 million more coming out of the general fund. This divert income tax revenue transportation. That's kind of like what we've talked about before, which is the credits that the state gave during the recession. This is another one where they decided that they're going to divert income tax revenue that currently goes to the general fund and helps pay the $10 billion worth of items in the general fund that in 18, 19, 19, 20, 20, 21, you see how it's growing. So $600 million, a sizable amount that's coming out of the general fund. Medicaid. I don't profess to be a Medicaid expert, other than know when Medicaid was expanded, we knew it was going to put pressure not only on the general fund, but our school aid fund. And so you see here, 420 million on the Medicaid financing area hitting the general fund. Medicaid expansion is really expanding the services and the pool of people. The impacts there. Now, the bottom one is if you don't do Medicaid expansion and you do the discontinuation of the expansion, meaning the federal government right now is paying 100% and it starts to revert back to the state. That's why there's draws going forth for the next four fiscal years. If you do away with it totally, it's about $250 million, hit directly into the state's budget. And there's no federal involvement. I don't think the state of Michigan is going to do that. Especially drugs that's really related to corrections. Those are some federal items where federal guidance regarding use in Medicaid and corrections are primarily hepatitis C and cystic fibrosis drugs, $150 million. Personal property tax reform. And then the general fund, our family's fund we've talked about before. University community college funding. The general fund continues to shift into the school aid fund. Revenue sharing, that was decreased during recession. But those cities, towns, ships, and villages are putting pressure on the state legislators to return their revenues because their budgets are struggling. And then the budget stabilization is required by the state code. MCL code, the state constitution, that when there's excess funds in the general or school aid fund, they have to deposit in the budget stabilization. So that's not an option. So sometimes when there's extra money, there's not really extra money because it's got its own stabilization fund. What's that all mean? Well, now I can still tell the numbers for you to try to make simplicity out of this. So, the most conservative or the best-case scenario just shy of $1 billion, $916 million. Worst-case scenario is $2 billion. The next line you see there is the 10.2 and the 10.6. The 10.2 is the current year's state general fund budget. You see the proposed budget 10.6 for next year. The state's growing at about 3.7%, which is right around inflation. And then if I did a couple of years back, you'd see a similar increase to the state's general fund. The 916 million is 8.9% of the 10.2 billion. And conversely over here, 1.9 billion is 18. So if the draw on the general fund is three times to six times what the revenue is growing in the general fund, one can conclude we're going to see either the school aid fund or something have to change in order for the state to continue to live the way they live. Because there's already promises out there, but mathematics will not equal. And so you've heard me back in January talk about, we know in 18, 19, the general fund already has a billion-dollar shortfall. So we may make it through fiscal '17, '18. But 18, 19 may be the day that it comes back and catches up with the school aid fund and the state's general fund. But those are things our grand scheme would watch for and try to figure out what is it going to mean to us in the way of our budget. School aid pressures. Again, Medicaid also has a revenue source from that Medicaid. And it's about 200 million on a whole fiscal year. Because it got implemented mid-year, it's about 150 million in the current '16, '17 fiscal year. MIPS or cost, which is that unfunded crew liability. It's 90 million. Detroit Public Schools, we don't forget about it. You don't know, it really hasn't been in the news a lot. It's 40 million this year because the state's using almost 35 million reserves left over from the '15, '16 year. So it's really about a $75 million problem for the next 25 years. It's a $3.4 billion problem if they go under. So it is a serious contention to the school aid fund. And we know it can't go under, but we also know it's going to be a drag on the state's per pupil. So the bottom, foundation allowance, the base today is $7,511. So 1%, $75, costing $111 million. If you've seen a couple of slides, the governor, the senate, the house, they're around $100 per pupil. So you're talking about $150 million. So in order to give a $100 increase, the school aid fund's got to grow or at least have over a pretty sure $150 million of new money. Or they're going to take the 150 from some other funding source, eliminate that, and move it over here. They've done that too many years on us.
Is that based on the same student count though?
It is based on the same student count, but...
Because student count's actually decreasing, right?
Well, it was up until this year where they were off by 6,000. So, yes, it is decreasing and that's how the state has balanced. Some of the pressure on the school aid fund is that what the total student enrollment state is going down, about 15,000 students a year. If you add that, yeah, you'd see serious, you know, $250 million or so more dollars needed just to maintain a status quo in the school aid fund. So now the busy slide. So we waited longer than we normally waited this year. It was late April before we saw, late March before we saw the senate, the house version. I could kill Forrest, I choose not to. I brought it to show you an example. This thickness here is about eighty pages of every line item in the school aid budget compared to the senate, the house. What I took is about six or seven big items. I'll go back and refresh you on how it works. So, governor proposes, senate proposes, house proposes. There's many line items in here that have $0 appropriated. When they finally sit down and go to conference committee, all these numbers can move. So as long as something was proposed, they can take it from the $100, take it down to zero, move those monies in that funding to somewhere else in the school aid bill. So even though it's predictable, there are about a half a dozen other items in this, each one of their proposed budgets that have $0 proposed, which means when it gets to conference, we know there's going to be negotiations going on. And we just don't know what pot's going to come from. So we'll take the top one. I've got the technical section, so if someone really wants to go and look it up and read it, you've got section 6.4 is really shared time pupils. The house is saying there's going to be a max. So those districts that serve non-public school students, homeschoolers, a parochial, they're going to max the foundation allowance at .75 instead of 1.0. That would cost us about $142,000 from our current funding. Now, it's not in the senate, the governors, but that doesn't mean now that it's in the house, they could adopt that in the final bill that they come up with. This is the second time we've seen this.
Yeah, we saw similar recommendations out of the house last year. Actually, the governor had one in there too. So this is, this is an idea that for whatever reason is gaining some momentum, at least on the proposal side. It's the second year in a row we've seen it. Essentially what it's saying is that although a district, a public, a K-12 public may provide service to a non-public private or homeschool family or entity, normally we recover 100% of the FTE cost from the state. Now they want to cap that so we would still be providing service, but not achieving the same revenue from the state to do that service. So certainly, you know, $140,000 on the revenue side, as we grow that with the service which we're telling St. Paul to grow our homeschool partnership. This could be, you know, a huge impact as it kind of exponentially, as our program exponentially grows. So we didn't, we don't forget enough. We, for historical reasons, served the private and non-public, but the homeschool piece is new to us as a way to capture more revenue, right? And so we have partial FTE that we're getting from all these families, which goes to our general fund and offset our defi enrollment.
If that were to pass, I mean, is there any way to charge some of these families? Like if they're getting like online services that they'd have to produce as a family anyhow, I mean, are they getting a better program if you lost?
So essentially, you know, Wendy, the virtual world and the services that we offer are ever-changing. And even, even in the, in there at Montana, we've been kind of dealing with the virtual vendor side of virtual learning. The rates, the curriculum, the requirements, the people accounting components of all that have really evolved even in the last, interestingly, the last three years. So there's a variety of different sections in the people accounting code that allow districts to capture FTE in a variety of ways depending on the nature of the relationship with the family or student. So I wouldn't go as far as to say it's fee-based, you know, but there are, there are certainly, you know, we're looking at a number of non-traditional populations to see how can we offer and extend our programs to them. Problematic with a proposal like this is we count on that revenue because we're bearing the cost of, you know, for example, online teacher mentors, online content support, technology fees, online curriculum, facilities. And so it's a, it's a for-profit engagement for us because we want to end up with, you know, making some money on the deal. The more they cut into the revenue side, it disincentives these districts to do that.
And unfortunately, it's a pretty public education, so you can't charge back.
There are issues with charging the fees back to the families, right? So for example, you've got...
We can do a college, we can't do it.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll just...
But I feel like this is a game that they play. I mean, you guys have been here for a while, we haven't seen this, right? I feel like we get these opportunities, right, to make these partnerships to see, oh, we can charge off TV, right? And then they go when they want to close the loophole. It's like a tax game that we play in taxes, right? As the minute they see there's a leak, whoops, they make a law and they close it. So I feel like this is, you guys, right? This is what they do, the same thing. It's like every time we find that there's something we can do with that TV.
It makes you question, it's very accurate. It makes you question the intention, right? So was the intention of them, you know, the proposals we heard four and five years ago, anywhere in the place, anytime education? Okay, so...
So all of a sudden we get innovative.
Yeah, all of a sudden you start doing it. And well, that wasn't our intention for public school districts to do it. It was the intention to create a competitive entity with public. Yeah, it was, the intention was to have competition with us, right?
Well, then, let's say, yeah, let's close it. Uh-oh, sorry, I'm trying to use this.
Their argument is that they felt that their districts that were cheating the system by using this. The argument back is if there is, then fine, go after them, but don't audit us all. We're out there trying to do the right thing, the right thing.
See, and it's hard to audit, but there's a system in place, right? So we have, we have an auditing process here internally that is then checked by our ISD auditor, right? We then submit that to the state of Michigan to verify. There's a, there's a detailed process to ensure that what we're offering is legitimate, that the interactions between like online virtual mentor teachers and content support is actually happening. And it's a pretty rigorous process. What, what we're seeing though is even at the MBE level, right? So you've got a lot of, a lot of moving parts here. You've got the locals, K-12s, ISDs, the department of that, and the legislature. The MBE would just assume have kids in the most traditional classrooms and the least innovation as possible because from people accounting perspective, that's the easiest thing to account for, right? This kid goes to that school for six hours a day for 13 years and that's it they're done. The more complex the system is for how students can achieve credit, you know, seat time waivers, you do enrollment and zero hours, seventh hours of virtual learning and a variety of other methods. It makes, it does compensate the process, but you're providing greater choice and options for families, which I think that was the goal.
And I think it's not just more options, but I think more quality. You know, you're watching the digital families, they might not have a salary necessarily. And what is good on, on the curriculum? What's a quality curriculum? You're not going to have teachers as much for it. So for some of these homeschool families, I think it's often a more quality product. And there's teachers there to help and to interpret and assist.
Well, like the school's in charge of facilitating it. We know that online learning is not appropriate for every student. It's just not. It's not a wholesale answer to say, well, it's cheaper, so everybody goes online. No, it's a component and it's blended. And some students, it's a great situation, certain transport, others it's not. But you've got to let us capture the revenue, right, to make it worth our while to do that, so. Sorry, Mark.
What's up, Wendy?
Item one.
Just continues to underscore that we need to have a voice, you know, in Lansing and express some of these points of view that people may not be hearing or thinking about.
You need to make the voice heard and make, make the calls represented problems presented to bring, let them know.
Send your email, they can call you back. I'm telling you, I know it, they will call you back.
Mike McQuaid, I'm finding a great point that $142,000 loss in revenues to appear to me schools is a speck of dust in the sand of the Lansing budget process. Right, but that, that's a lot of money for us.
A $12 million school aid budget, that doesn't get their attention.
You have to get their attention, know what that does otherwise to them. This is buried in a bill, which is buried in an omnibus bill, which becomes just such a minute detail that nobody's paying attention. You have to hone in on that so that they do pay attention. They realize that this is costing this district this amount of money. And that means this, you know, what the things that could happen with $142,000 plus dollars.
Your point of these is, is a theme throughout, which is, is becoming difficult, more difficult than it's ever been in this business to try to develop a budget for a recommendation for administration to the board in timely fashion that has any real meaning until we see where all the dust settles from Lansing. The next line item, section 20, foundation allowance, is a prime example because what I don't have room, because you wouldn't be able to read the print, is the governor's version is truly a 2X. So he's proposing to raise the foundation allowance in a way that helps the base foundation and the higher foundation districts don't get as much. But over on the right-hand side, the house, the house is doing it across the board. Meaning charter, which there's some, almost 300 charters, they get the base foundation allowance. There's not a charter that's through 12th grade, it's K-8. And so we know they're getting the same amount of money as a district who's running the full suite of programming, including special ed. And that's where you see the difference. And what becomes very difficult is for me to even try to quantify. Every one of these bills is about 280 to 350 pages long. We rely on experts, legalese of the mics of the world to read and interpret within hours so we can kind of figure out where this is to do what Mr. Keller said, which is to try to get feedback back to legislators as quick as possible, good, bad, neutral. And then we start to distill it. The problem is there's so many moving pieces anymore. Even those of us who've done this for a long time, it's hard to figure out exactly where and what the dollars are going to be and what the net impact will be to us without going too far one way, making cuts too deep, or not making enough and finding out we're dipping in a fund balance or creating a deficit situation for the district. So the schooling on the foundation allowance, where a lot of road focus is in the middle. So the senate seems like it's high, $176. The problem is down here at the bottom, MIPS are offset. What they're doing is they're taking away this funding line from us, which is 73 hours a kid, $363,000. So when you net it, we're at 100, 100, and 103. So they're all about the same. So probably if I had to predict my crystal ball, we're going to see about $100 a student. The question will be, will it be a true 2X formula where the base foundation districts will get the higher amount? The higher foundation districts will get half of that, $50? Or will it be across the board, everyone gets 100 that the house has?
Plus you can't guarantee on this, so you can get a busier cut.
That's true.
If the budget doesn't come through, like you've seen that multiple times. Let's face it.
Then you see what we've seen in the governor. I'm going to kind of go down the governor's column because the governor's thrown in a number of items where he's shown some differential, some different approach to funding, which districts have asked in recent time, fix proposal aid, it's not working. So high school per pupil bonus. So what he's proposed is for your high school population, 9th through 12th grade, you get an extra $50. So for us, it's $83,000. Section 29, declining enrollment. There's almost three-quarters of the 550 traditional districts in the state are declining enrollment districts. That would equal 202,000 in additional funding for us. And then section 31A at risk, which all three bodies believe in at-risk funding, but you see the difference from as high as 513 to as low as 205 in the governor. So we start to try to distill all of it. One more on the MIPSers. MIPSers is another one of these, watch my hand and see if you can follow where it's at. So the state has used 8% for the 25 years I've been in this business as the rate of return that the portfolio is going to earn on interest income. We have not seen 8% in the last five years. And now we're talking about lowering it finally to 7%. And so this .62 is really the differential. Lower what their expectation of earnings is because the unfunded, the gap between the dollars and the money to the liability continues to grow. And so they're trying to close it. They're taking a ton of money off the top, almost 300 billion. But that's requiring us to move our rate from 24.94% to 25.56, meaning every dollar wage we pay, we pay 25.56 cents to the retirement system we have for our employees. That's going to cost us $158,000. So when you start to distill all the numbers down, I distilled it to blue. So the governor, we may see as high as $830,000 in new dollars. Again, we need the 262. Use our 4976 projected students for next year. We're only going to see about $166,000 under the governor's version. And then conversely across the chart, 157 for the senate, 171. So any case you see, we're far short of the funding we need in order to keep us the same revenue as this year into next year. Questions, lots of stuff on this slide. The key dates coming up. We have our first budget manager meeting. It's about a week later, about 10 days later than it was last year. But again, we hadn't, by the last week of March, even seen with the house and the senate yet. So we're waiting to get some more information now that we had it and at least present somewhat of scenarios to them. May 17th, in a few weeks, is the second revenue conference. When the house came out with their version that final week of March, we came right out and said, we're not going to do anything until we get to the main conference. So we're not going to talk budget, we're not going to even try to figure out what we're going to settle until we see where the revenue numbers come in for the second half of the year. Second budget manager meeting is May 22nd. And our goal is we will have something in front of board on June 22nd to adopt. Hopefully it has some meaning. Hopefully we're still not wondering what the state's going to do with adopting. Or as you said, when you said, there have been years we've gone, it's time for October before we've seen the final budget. I don't have any indication of that. I think we'll have a budget by June. The question we, how will those numbers hold moving into the fiscal year?
State goes to start October 1st.
October 1st. So how does that all distill and start to impact us in our direct budget that we're developing? So you all have received this, but I've included this from the prior one because the pie shows graphically how much is short, that $162. And that's a big piece for declining enrollment district by our size. Yes, we were on a track of about 200. It's eased to about 170. That's good news, but it's still 170 or about $1.3 million every year. We start off with less revenue because we lost students. I included this, which is Stanford Consultants, who two years ago now did projections on students. And you can see as we move in '17, '18, we're predicting 4976. We're slightly higher than what Freud's most likely, but this is his conservative most likely. He had a more lenient version that he told us not to use for forecasting for budgets that the 4976 is about 25 students away, if I had that one. But we've used this one as our guidance to say, are we on track? And we stayed on that track. This is not to scare people. This is to give an example of our budget without throwing tons of numbers up in front of you, what it would take to fill a $1.3 million hole. And that's happens every year for the last, I've been here three years, and I think it's been the last six years, roughly in that same number equivalent to loss of students. So that's 13 teachers, and that's not 13 entry-level teachers. That would be 13 teachers at the top in order to, you know, fill that. 100% of our custodial staff. 100% of our transportation staff. Half of our secretary staff. All of our utilities. You know, I'm not being outlandish, but yeah, all of our utilities, heat, gas, electric, and fuel for the buses equals about $1.2 million. 100% of all the principals. We have no one to run our buildings. 100% administration. That one came due because by law, you've got to have a superintendent. And 100% of our professionals eliminated. So the point of this slide is to show the public and our staff, in order to achieve the kind of cuts revenue year after year, the state is making it harder and harder and almost impossible because we cannot eliminate any one of those areas. And even if we start to downsize any one of those areas, it will have a direct impact on the delivery of our services, one way or the other. So it's becoming harder and harder for us to balance the bottom line and not keep continuing going into fund balance. And with that, questions?
Well, we can, and when they transportation, I just like to see all these students show up.
What are you doing? This is a frame of reference to show you what $1.3 million that's equates to, so.
I had a district once I tried that. Oh, I have a court.
So what, this, this presentation... So what, this, this presentation's on, on the web tomorrow, with the other two presentations we've done, so anybody can go on the web, official website, and pull this presentation up, all, all three are on there. The motivation with these presentations is to compel us to continue to think kind of outside the box probably budget, because we can't just keep saying, what are we going to cut next? How, you know, who, which one of those groups do people want to live without? The answer is none of them, the one, right? Who I'm all. And how do we move forward going, you know, key dates that Mark shows you. The budget manager's process is an important one for us because we meet with representatives from all employee groups, we'll share all three of the presentations we've shared with the board with that group, and try to solicit some input from them about, you know, what ideas they may have. But as we move forward with ideas, we talked about alternative compensation, we talked about strategic planning moving forward, how we deliver our product and our service, it's got to look vastly different, you know, and it should. So this should motivate us to, as we go through this, another round of budgeting, that, you know, we don't want to be in the, in the same position year for year, what can we cover, what can we live without? So this is a catalyst for, we got to do things different.
There was one, I want to go back just for a second. When I said there's world events, so it'll be interesting to hear from the economist from Gilvan, Michigan State on the 17th, the impact, so those that followed the news today, heard GM lost their complete plan in Venezuela, gone. Product, equipment, there's no hope that they're probably going to recover anything, so that's got to be a multi-billion dollar investment. Now, that's going to have an effect, GM's large enough, but it's going to be interesting on how we start to hear how that trickles back into the pipeline of, remember what I said in January, we're still 60% of the state relying on automotive for our revenues. So it's not just the automotive and the related, it's the revenues that come to the schooling and the general fund are still 60% related to automotive. And so we start to think about what's happened in the last two weeks, the uncertainty in North Korea, the uncertainty in Syria, the uncertainty with Iran, and certainly with China. All these are going to start to come back to hit the economy. Remember I told you, what's the growth in the economy? Growth in economy is barely 1%. We can't continue to afford to have one, 2% growth. You don't want runaway inflation, but you want controlled inflation in the 3% to 5% to 6%, so there's growth in revenue every year, because otherwise, my chart there, the state's general fund's growing 3%, that's a good year. Usually it's only been growing by about $100 million. Well, costs are growing faster than the rate of revenues that are growing, and that's why it's a concern while we're watching all these indicators.
But I also make sure you can't have, continue to have education funded on a tax system that is up and down by sales tax. That's ridiculous. Proposals got to change.
There's a couple major studies going on, but nothing's come out.
It's been going on for a while.
There's one that's being pushed by some major political individuals, both in the school system and the legislation that is supposed to come out at the end of the calendar year with a recommendation, as well as the funding that was in the school aid for the legislature in their study. But I really think there'll be something coming out of the Oakland County Bob Moore and the retired superintendent, Vicki Markort, doing the study, it's a cross-segment of Chamber of Commerce to recommend how proposal A needs to be changed in the state constitution. And there'll be winners and losers, it's not going to be everyone's going to win, because the money is, we're not going to grow the pot. We have to come to more reasonable, stable ways to fund, not necessarily grow the funding.
Because you can innovate, you can continue to innovate.
You have unpredictable attrition rate for tax.
For, we, in our budget, we, in our preliminary, put four retirements, that's what we've been using. Kevin was here, it was 10, but we had seen when I came on board three years ago, it started to slow. So we use four, we're, I think we're at on that, I didn't check with him, we were at, what, five or six so far, and it's, we're still not done with those, are the early notifications. So we've, we've had better results than when we put in our preliminary budget, which helps in the end of our budget, so the operating deficit, looks on paper large, it's softened by about 100, 150,000 for what we have to do.
The money are able to retire, right?
We have limited ability to do that, because we only have data on how long did they tend with us, not before. So we, we can't just guess that someone who's got 20 years with us can retire based on their age, because we don't know that they start later in life in education, that they have 10 years somewhere else and they got 30 years in the system. Kim and I have talked about, but we don't have accurate data to really pick.
Can we get that?
Well, we can ask, employees don't have to give it to us, but that's what we require us to ask.
It'd be nice to know how many people are able to retire, like people have been talking Any news on health care costs?
Yes. So we had a Mesa increase, what, a week ago? So 9.4% increase. So heart cap's going up 3.3% for 17. So yes, the amount the employee will be absorbing will be larger than they've seen in the last couple of years. Heart cap limits our cost, be about, probably about $150,000, $200,000 increase in our healthcare line because the heart cap's going up. That rate implied is actually around 8.6%. And you say, well, how can that be? Because the premium went up 9.3, but the overall rate went down because taxes and fees are smaller this year than they were last year. So the overall final premium that's determined where the employees got to pay is slightly less because taxes and fees are down, and this is the second year in a row.
Slightly less than that right now, less than it was before.
This is the second year in a row that 100% of taxes and fees, the employees absorb. Two years ago Mesa covered 50%, and I think the year before, 100% or vice versa. So we're starting to see where there's some stabilization, but we're going to continue to see those kind of rate increases because of drugs. And it's not our utilization, it's market driven, it's what's going on.
This is going to cause employee share to go up?
Yes.
Did the healthcare cost of living go up? What do they call it, that? Hard cap, the age?
The heart cap went up 3.3%. So that's supposed to be indicative of in the economy, the healthcare portion.
So even beyond the 3.3, their share is still is going to go up?
Yes. Now, our carrier has done a number of new items and new elements, and we just came from here at 6 o'clock, our first healthcare committee ruling that out, where Mesa's trying to do mandatory mail order, a three-tier drug card that will lower premiums by 5%. Or we'll move into co-insurance, which is a total new concept to a Mesa member. And the net effect will be to lessen and maybe hold, depending on what choice plan you pick, your premium may stay the same amount of your pocket, you're done, but we're just starting that process of picking which four plans will be up there.
That's a simple kind of game, we were talking about the legislature, they change formulary rates and things to get costs down, as soon as they change the formulary, then they change the price of the drugs, and the price back up again, this thing's just going to pop up.
But Mesa itself is throwing out new plans to help with the problem of this.
Yes, but it's, our, our members, our 310 members who are covered by our plans, 86% on our extra prescriptions are using generics. Last year, generic drugs went up 47% to market. So if I go back five years, and it was a push to have everyone in this industry move to generic to lower your premiums, we've done that from a end-user standpoint, and we're still seeing double-digit, I mean, the statewide average is 7.9% for Mesa, but there's districts who are in the 15, 16, 18% increase under Mesa's product delivery. So I don't think we're going to see any change in an 8% to 12% increase in healthcare any time soon. And we couldn't, we've been told it'll get worse depending what goes on with ACA, with the federal legislature, what they do with the Affordable Care Act, because so much of that's driven by large losses by large insurance carriers, somebody has got to, they have to make that money up somewhere. So it's either going to come out of taxes in the federal government budget, or it's going to come through user fees and taxes and fees in the system. That'd be all they have to bring.
It is? It's relative. And where are the questions?
Do you find it's going to be interesting, I mean, it'll be simple without defining a way to do things at less cost while increasing scores and everything?
It's easy.
No problem. You haven't been here long enough yet, I know you know this and you've worked with this stuff in the past, but everything that has been put in place over, it's, Mark's a fairly new delivery man for the same old message. And every time you innovate, every time you do what the legislature says you should do, you hit the targets, they move it, or they punish you for it. And it's just, it's unbelievable, it's just the same old stuff. So a few years ago we laughed and said, we just reinvent educational delivery, then we'll be okay, we'll be pretty much done with that, and it's just...
You just have to do it again?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark.